I'm sorry, we call the meeting to order.
Yeah.
June has a short statement today.
Good evening, everyone. The city county library board trustees meeting is being recorded this evening. The library policy of private citizens requests you to record this meeting and that request has been granted. The board of trustees does not record its meetings. Thank you.
Good afternoon. It's dawn. I'm Christine Spring and I'm the current president of the board of trustees for our county library system. There are six other members on the board and four of them are in attendance. We board members are all volunteers serving seven-year terms. We receive no compensation. We are all longtime community residents. There are two other people at the table. Drew Wichterman is our director and Angie Agosta is our fiscal officer. Once again, I'd like to thank you for caring about the library and its patrons. And thank you for your involvement. I thank you for communicating your experience to us. The library exists to serve all the residents of Nicolay County. As our mission statement says, Nicolay County Library provides information and services to educate, enrich, and engage our community. Tonight is a regular board meeting. We will be conducting all our regular business. We will take up the reconsideration of making of a new by Rachel Greener during old business. We have received fourteen official requests for reconsideration. We board members have spent hours of our time reviewing this issue. I assure you, we have read your emails, followed your comments on social media, and listened intently to our conversations on the sidewalk, in the grocery store, and elsewhere. We've also all taken an hour and a half webinar on the topic. We are very aware of the challenge book's content. We have each seen and read the book. Tonight, we will address the concern during old business. According to our policy, public participation is done at the beginning of a meeting and that is how we will run today's meeting. Each of you who wishes to address the board must provide your name and address. You will be given two minutes to speak and our vice president will time you. Please try not to repeat the thoughts conveyed by a speaker before you. Use your two minutes to add new information to the conversation. Speakers are asked to sign the list at the door and we will close that list off momentarily if you have not signed it yet. To the extent that it is possible, we will start with the person who will speak against the book, followed by a person who is not against the book. And we will alternate. We will devote twenty minutes of our meetings to public comments. Our policy regarding the patron code of conduct will be enforced at this meeting. There can be no disruptive behavior, profanity, or harassment. With such behavior, you waive your right to attend this meeting and you will be removed. If you would like to read the board policy in its entirety or the rules for public participation in the Ohio open meetings law, it can be provided to you. So, it's now public comment time. Is there a volunteer to go first? Do we have a list?
Which one is speaking?
Yes, the speaker. Did you want to speak?
Okay. Who would like to be first? Who's on the list? Is that a hand? All right. State your name and your address, please.
I can stand back here and find out. My name is Dave Horni. My name is... And I've written a letter and I've given each of you on the board a copy of the letter. I'm asking you to pass a motion tonight and make him pass a note tonight to change the policy. In a letter to Director Wichterman, it was asked that this book would be removed and his response said, quote, "Part of his response said, 'Basically, the library chooses items that have educational value and those are recommended by professionals.'" First of all, let me say that if any industry association expert stands up and says, "This is what our industry should do," you can be assured they're not talking about the general interest of the public. They're talking about what would advance their industry. In the 1950s, the experts in the chemical industries had PhDs and they said the solution to pollution is dilution. That's what the industry experts did. They were advocating for what was the best interest of the chemical industry, not the general public. So, basically, his response said that there are no... He cited a policy here, 2.7.4.8, and I won't read that. But I mean, he basically interpreted that policy as granting him authority to place any book in any place in the library and what his choice is, what his determination is. I think the conflict is that we feel the director should be told to place materials in the library that would meet the needs of the public and meet the standard, not what a person who's director just happens to feel is appropriate. There are things coming down the road. In California, there's a new victim class called... They want the pedophiles to now be called minor attracted people. A book could come into the library, be offered to the library. I'm sure it'll be offered to the library saying, "Let's not call pedophiles pedophiles. That's racist. Let's call them minor attracted people." There's nothing right now in the library to prevent the director from putting that library book in the library. This book might be handled today, but there needs to be a policy. I believe, my opinion, I'm recommending you pass a motion that says... Okay, I'll just finish up. I pass a motion that says, "The policies are changed to make sure that books placed in the library meet community standards and are age-appropriate if they're placed in any section." Thank you very much.
All right, who's next? Do I go down the list and call somebody?
Oh, I'll go.
All right. Name and address, please.
My name is Matthew Briner. In recent times, we have witnessed a disturbing trend of book banning that threatens our fundamental rights. A few in this community have called for the book to be banned because they think that the book is grooming children with an image of two men in a locker room showering with a child. When looking at the context of this page, it's clearly educationally explaining male anatomy, purpose of the body, parts and sperm, not promoting an LGBT agenda as some in the community are acting. I think those in the community that believe so are sexualizing an illustration from its original meaning. From most of the reactions that I've seen on social media and attending the last regularly scheduled meeting, it's pretty clear that most people in the community are against banning the book. I'm very grateful that most in the community have this stance. I also want to give the community members a brief civics lesson on free speech. There are claims that the board of trustees were censoring the public and that their First Amendment rights were being infringed on, all while implying the board of trustees were communists. This couldn't be further from the truth. In fact, it was the very disruptive community members who were censoring and disrupting the free speech rights of the members of the board and the director. Our free speech rights do not give us the right to talk over someone else and take away their right to free speech. Also, it stayed in the library's policy that public comments are allowed before the course of the trustee meeting. The folks claiming that they were being censored had their opportunity and did speak at the beginning of the meeting. Had they actually been censored, they would not have been given the opportunity to do so. Banning books in a manner of political ideology or ideological motivation is an affront to the principles we hold dear. It sends a message that certain perspectives are too dangerous to be heard, undermining the very essence of a robust democracy, a society where diverse opinions and ideas can coexist, foster growth and understanding. Let us not forget that history has shown us the dangers of suppressing information. It is through open dialogue, even with ideas we find uncomfortable, that we can challenge our own beliefs, promote critical thinking, and ultimately progress as a society. In conclusion, the freedom to read and access a variety of ideas is a cornerstone of our society. Banning books contradicts the principles of free speech and stifles intellectual growth of our nation. It is our collective responsibility to defend that right to read, even when faced with ideas that challenge our own. Only through this commitment can we truly embody the democratic values that we hold dear. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'll go. Chuck Hamilton. I'm a little upset with what I just heard, okay? Common sense, you know, should prevail, okay? Kids, let kids be kids. That's my thought, okay? If this guy gets his way, anything can be submitted into the library and tried to use free speech as a fight to do it. Totally unacceptable, okay? Sorry, I'm a little upset here. You know, when I hear people, a lot of times, they'll say, "Oh, the majority of the people want this. The majority of the people want that." They like to speak for the majority of the people? When 99% of the time, they don't know what they're talking about and they're just saying that kind of stuff, okay? That isn't true. Freedom of speech, really, we're talking little kids. Five years' age, five years and up, you know? Banning books, yeah, Nazis banned books, that sounds scary, you know? Adults should select the books that children are allowed to see. You don't just put any kind of crap in the library, you know, for kids to be able to see, okay? It starts with this book and it continues on with all kinds of filth. So, I hope y'all do the right thing and get this book out of the library because it's just ridiculous to allow this kind of stuff. Thank you.
Okay. A person who is not against the book. To the extent there is someone here. Go ahead. Name your address, please.
Chris Burton. I've got four kids. They are six to thirteen, so they are squarely in the range for this book. And they've all read it. They've all read it without their parents. First, a couple factual things, okay? A lot of people are upset because they think that this was placed next to Pickles. I've been over there. There's no bookshelf next to Pickles. As far as I can tell, this was about 25 feet away from Pickles on the end cap of the nonfiction section, which is where it should be. The shower scene that people are sometimes upset about, they think that's not reality. I've been in a water park and two state parks that look very similar to that shower scene. And then for everybody else, do you remember what the Deer Creek outdoor changing room used to look like? This at least has a roof over it. But the deeper things that I'm disturbed about are two underlying themes. One is about, you know, if we were upset about roads and the engineer didn't do what we thought that we were going to do, we wouldn't try to take over the engineer's job. The people that are experts, the people that have degrees in library science, the people that read hundreds, if not thousands, of professional book reviews to select books, this is their job. This is the thing that they have professional education for. They know what to do. The other thing is talking about protecting our children from books, from knowledge, okay? No one is going to be taken advantage of because they know more information. No one is going to be disadvantaged because they know too much. Books are the solution. They're not weapons to be used against us.
Thank you. All right. Someone else who is against the book. Your turn. Name and address, please.
Jen July. No one really... I have not heard anybody ask the book to be banned. I would prefer the book be banned because I understand it's wrong. But nobody has asked the book to be banned. They asked for it to be moved. That was the request. And last meeting, there were 28 people here and of those 28 people, two were against having the book taken out and placed. That meant 26 people, most of the people here, wanted the book moved to a different section. Nobody was rooting for me, that's no secret. But if we allow this book, then maybe we can break the Bible back, because there's no Bible here that I'm aware of, and put it in the same place, a children's Bible. And I'm sure that these people won't... you wouldn't have a problem with that. How many people here tonight want the book moved? So, we've got, again, a greater majority of people who want the book moved. If we move it, if we leave it where it is, then let's bring the Bible in. Let's bring some books about hunting, some Second Amendment books, put them up there where they can be seen. Let's bring everything back that we've removed from both the schools and the libraries. Let's say the pledge allegiance again for our meetings here in this library. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag that we hold so dear. And let's pray and then maybe this won't be a problem. Maybe everybody can learn to speak in a way of love to each other and understanding that sometimes it requires compromise in order to accomplish community and love. And ditto to what Dave said.
Another person who is not against the book.
Guess it's up to me now. Tracy Calasas. I am a father. I do not want to see this book banned. People who ban books end up burning books and then burning people. That's history. And I don't appreciate when people lie. Because I was here during that meeting and there were more than two people stood up and talked for the book. Tell the truth. I appreciate that. Now, I have no problem with this book. I've got it on my Kindle. I've read it through. What I see is a minority of people who happen to be violently verbal, screaming and yelling, "Ban this book." They don't understand the book. This book is not a dirty book. It doesn't start communism. It doesn't lead to pedophiles. I've got a Bible at home that has pictures of naked people in it. Does that make the Bible a dirty book? I don't think so either. But I'm tired of people coming in and telling me, as one of the citizens of this town, what I can have my children read. It is time we allow parents to raise their children. And I am a parent raising children.
You keep looking at me and all I have to say back to you...
I'm looking at the whole group.
You're looking at me and I'm just telling you...
You're off your time, sir.
Take your book for your home.
...between the audience, you're talking to us.
You can read it in your home, dude.
Okay. Can you finish?
Thank you very much. I'm tired of being told by others what I can and cannot have my children read. That is a fundamental right in the United States. And it is time we stop banning things because we don't like how it's portrayed. Thank you.
Another person who is against the book.
Steve Garner. Sheriff Bill. Nobody's trying to ban your book. If you want to have your book, more power to you. They're just asking if you move, maybe put it in an appropriate place. Let the parents check it out. I was a child sexual abuse investigator for many years in Franklin County. I'm telling you right now, this book would be useful to a pedophile. And they're probably looking at this... Oh, wait a minute, I said pedophile. I'm sorry, minor attracted person. I lock a lot of the minor attracted persons up. And they do use materials like this. And people that don't condone it, or I mean, sorry, don't condemn or condone it. If you want your book, have your book. Just put it in a place where the parents can check it out. If the parent wants to give it to a kid, let them give it to them. Nobody's trying to ban your book. More power to you to check it out and give it to them. If someone's coming here right now, there's people that will use this book for pedophilia. And it's on you guys to protect our children and put it in a place where it shouldn't be accessed by minors unless the parent gives them permission. I'm getting mad. Please do the right thing. Because if you guys don't do it, I'm sure many people in this county will probably do your job for you when they won't pass another library that...
All right. A person who is not against the book.
My name is Dr. Bonnie Renaud. I'm going to start with the story I told the last time, but I'm sure you guys remember. My three-year-old child came up to me and told me that his cousin told him that kissing is sex. And I had to explain to him, at three years old, what sex was because I didn't want to be respectful, telling everybody I had sex with mommy before that ever happened. Okay? So, this book would have been tremendously helpful to explain to Joshua exactly what sex is at that age. Yeah, it's a little bit too advanced for a three-year-old, but a three-year-old had to know what sex was because his cousin, whose mother would not teach her child what sex was, had to tell my son sex. Now, I have no problem with moving the book. Put it in the parenting section. That would be amazing. But taking the book out of this library is taking the choice of parents away. We don't call pedophiles, whatever the heck the new term is. That is not done. It is not happening. There were a whole lot more than two people here that wanted the book. In fact, three of them are here tonight. This is... It's a book. It's a book to teach children about sex. That's it. Parent your own children. If you don't want your children to see the book, don't let them check it out. But don't demand that the library parent the book to children and don't demand that you can parent my children. That's it. Plain and simple. Thank you. Do I have another couple seconds? Can I please make one more statement real quick?
You just stopped before you...
There are many vidas in this filming right now, so even that is not true. Thank you.
All right. A person who is against the book.
Rachel Reed Martin. And I will say I have a two-year-old and an infant, now seven-month-old, and I bring them to this library at least once a week. And just a little story that I have from this past summer is I have... My daughter was an infant. I can't remember exactly which, if it was June or July. I was on maternity leave. She was, it's still in the stage where she was nursing on demand. She started getting a little bit fussy while I was here with my two-year-old. So, I said to a library employee, "I'm going to see if I can go feed my baby in a, is there a private room back here?" By the way, legally, I don't even have to ask. I can feed whoever I want, but I thought I would be polite. And I was completely humiliated by a library employee here that scoffed at me and said, "No, you cannot feed your baby here. There are children here." And what I was meaning to do was to go into a private area, not showing off, not making a point with a blanket over me, my baby, and I in a private room to feed her. And then she proceeded to tell me that I could go to a bathroom if that's what I really wanted to do, to feed my baby. What a ridiculous thing for me to ask. So, I guess like, if I'm not allowed to nurse my baby in a place where there could be kids around, then why is it okay to display that book where my kid is running around trying to look at Pickles in the children's area with the children's tools? I don't understand how we are deciding what is accepted in this library, if that's the case. Because I will tell you, I was in tears and completely humiliated. I obviously told some people about it. I moved past it because I really don't have time to deal with it. I have an infant, a full-time job, a two-year-old. But just like at this point, I really can't remain silent about it anymore because it just seems like the same people that are telling me that I'm not allowed... This isn't a safe place to feed my baby are the same people that are telling me. But the kids are mature enough to see a book like that displayed by the dandy pig. That's it.
Someone who is speaking, who is not against the book. I've got two other names here. Hamilton and McCaffrey. So, someone who is not for the book.
My name is Tammy Downs-McCaffrey. And coming here tonight, all I'm hearing is about banning the book, violence. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but all I hear is about banning the book, violence. I've not heard anybody saying, what I've read, about banning the book. They just want it moved to a more appropriate age level, like parents. And yes, I agree. I totally agree. They're right. Parents are the one to make the decision if the child is eligible, is mentally, emotionally accepting of this teaching. They need to learn, yes, but not on their own at two, three, four, five years old. All I'm asking and all I'm wanting out of this is, yes, keep the book. It is educational material that these children need to know. But by their parents and by the parent's choice. That's what I'm asking. I'm here to represent the children of Nicolay County. I work with Take Back the Strip. I work with Kids of Belo Horizonte. I work with Jeff Coleman, Kevin Clifton, and my son, God bless his soul, Fred and his daughters. These children here need education. They don't need parents fighting. They don't need parents arguing. Can we all just learn to agree to disagree on stuff? Why the arguing? Why raising the voice? Why saying things that are not true? That's all I've got to say. And I thank you very much and God bless you.
Is there anyone who is not for... Is there anyone on the other side? She was not for the book, so is there anyone who is...
Not against the book. Not against the book.
Not against the book, yes, thank you. All right. Your turn.
All right. Patty Hume. I'm totally against the book being out in the children's section, available to children. As a school teacher, I was not a, you know, I taught fourth through eighth grade. Sexuality at that age is very prominent. And I could kind of... And I could kind of understand, because you know, at age fifth grade, a lot of times they offer sex education to children, uh, with parental permission. So looking at it from the point of, okay, we have this and the parents will approve it. So I agree that we put the book in a reference section or a section for parents to check out only. Because again, that is giving parental permission. Same concept. But I've never heard of sex education given to kids at age five through eight. I've never heard that. This book supposedly is that age group. And it frustrates me to think that we want to just put that in the children's section and allow a child who's going in there to read the book, to just go in and pick that book and say, "Mommy, I want to read this book." Where they may not even know what the book is. And at that point, who knows what the parent is thinking? And I really, I feel really bad about your situation because, um, in Germany, we lived in Germany and, uh, sexuality was very, um, if you will, they didn't worry about all of that. When you talk about deer creek, changing in a bathroom, well, in Germany, you could sit on the side of, uh, you know, on a bench, and you could nurse your child anywhere in public. It does not matter. So I was really, I'm really disappointed even more so that the library has no care or concern for a nursing mother and a person that is wanting to bring their children here to the library. Because to me, that is even worse. Thank you so much for your time, and please remove the book to a location where parents can have control.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Please listen, I tell you, we have. I'd like to congratulate our reappointed board members. Kay? Kay is coming back on as a, as another term. She's just volunteered the next seven years of her life. Um, her term will end in twenty-third. All right, so at this time, we'll start our organizational meeting. The first order of elect, uh, the first order of business is to discuss who the officers will be next year. Who would be interested in making a nomination or volunteering for president, vice president, or secretary. I can place one name in, um, I know that, um, Stephanie has requested, uh, she's interested in. Is it okay to be, we'll, we'll get all of the candidates, um, lined up as one, 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 all three offices, okay? Jeff, put right to the top. So if, if.
I would be happy to.
Would you introduce the board members, please? Because for some of us who don't know who everyone on the board now is, or who will be, so when you said Kay, it's kind of like, who's Kay?
Okay. Roy Roberts. Kay Kingsley. Nate. Will Thomas-Cheff. Karen North. And the two people who aren't here. Jenny, Jenny Rainey. Thank you. She got married in the. And, um, Stephanie Ward.
Thank you.
Okay, so who are nominated?
You are.
And was there a second round? All right, so we have nominations for each. We have Kay. Will.
We're nominating Kay, because we usually do this like.
I made a motion.
Nominated Stephanie.
Lori.
I did. I did. My second.
You got all three of them?
Yes.
All right, so we will.
We usually do this like.
We will, we will vote on all three nominations at the same time. So, in favor? Opposed? Okay. You get January.
I guess.
Okay, committee assignments for the next year. Um, I'm, I'm gonna go out on a ledge here. One of the things that I learned over the last month is I, I, with all of this about the book, I've taken a deep dive in this policy manual, like I've never died before. Before. And the positive side of that is that I think this board, we can take a serious look at the entire document. It's a little outdated, it's a little weak in spots, we, we need to do some homework. So, um, ordinarily, our personnel and policy committee really deals more with personnel issues. But for the next year, I'd like the policy to be upfront and handled. I would, I would like to challenge the personnel and policy committee over the course of the next year to slowly pick away at the entire document. Oh, it's, there's no page number, so I can't tell you how long it is. But it's long. It's gonna take a year to go through it. And Drew will help, but we need to look at it, and we need to seriously consider the policy that's in it. Okay? Are you, are you all cool on that? Do we need to?
Did you want to expand?
We could.
I think if you have some concerns, probably should do it. I mean, I think the more, the more of us are.
The only, the only thing that occurs to me is that, is we have more than three people there. It's a public meeting, and, and we just have to advertise it. And we can still do it.
Public meeting, and many meetings are public.
They are, even though they're not a forum.
They are advertised.
Oh, okay, well, then let's do that.
Let's do it.
We all, we all want to be on personnel and policy next year?
I think that would be great, because we're a small group anyway, and a lot of times it's not.
Okay, well, I didn't want to, I, I know this can be a laborious conversation, and I don't want the board needing time to do that. I want to do that outside of the meeting. All right, so you're, you're okay? Will?
Yes.
You agree?
We all agree?
All right, so we have a locker-sized personnel and policy committee. And why don't you go ahead and put the other people on who aren't here? Or we're them. Surprise! They don't want to meet. They don't have to meet alone. Okay, so then, um, who would like to be on finance? And who would?
I would volunteer to be on the finance.
My name is Will.
I would assume Jenny would like to stay on that.
I would too. I would say Aaron would like to stay on there.
Okay. Three is enough.
Lori, do you have interest in it, or?
No, thank you. Respectfully, the question. Thank you.
Angie's offended by it.
Sorry.
Finance has that effect on people. Okay, um, Drew, the, um, the hiring committee that hired you, it is now defunct, right?
Yeah, I'm losing it. You can be established. Yeah, you can be established, but I don't see a purpose.
Got it, okay. And the foundation committee is?
Also inactive.
Not, it hasn't been discontinued, but it's inactive, so, okay. So we all know our committees on next year. Do we need, or do we need to vote on that?
They usually pass a motion. Sure, years ago, we didn't, and then they want to start passing.
State those committees.
You can, either way, you have a point for them, but.
A point. Yeah. It's easier, okay? Okay, administrative staff appointments. We need a roll call motion?
Yeah, so you can just.
To appoint Angie as our fiscal officer for next year?
Yeah, you can just move the following, um, appoint Ms. Fiscal Officer at the, at the approved high rate of salary, effective one seven twenty-four, setting my bond at two hundred thousand. Uh, that's effective one fifteen twenty-four. Appoint Shannon Kirby as Assistant Fiscal Officer of Hered, effective one seven twenty-four, setting her surety bond at two hundred thousand, effective one fifteen twenty-four. And then appoint Drew Woodstrom as Director, Compliance Officer for Credit Card Accounts and Pickaway County Community Foundation Fund Administrator, the Library Fund, and Imagination Library Fund, for twenty twenty-four. Um, at the approved salary, effective one seven.
Do you think?
Do we need to state what the amounts are? Because we're.
Yeah, we probably should. We're approving them.
I think we need to state those.
Yeah, so there's no.
Yeah, I don't want to just gloss over it.
One is two thousand five hundred eighty, starting, um, the, uh, fiscal officer, two thousand five hundred eighty, starting January seventh. But your bond doesn't start until January fifteenth.
That's just when the bond's got, that's when you hang it. It's just year to year.
But you're covered in that week, right?
You're year to year, one fifteen, one fifteen.
You're covered with last year's bond.
Yes.
I got it. Um, Shanna, the Assistant Fiscal Officer.
Shanna.
Shanna, I'm sorry. She is nineteen dollars and seventy-one cents an hour, effective January nine, seven. And, um, director is three thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and sixty cents, effective the same date, January seventh. So, okay. Roll call motion, would you like to start?
We need, we need, we need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion that will approve all those three appointments for twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Shanna, enter.
Second? I'll second.
Lori? In favor? Well, no, here comes a roll call for Lori.
Will Thomas-Cheff?
Yes.
Lori Roberts? Yes. Kay Kingsley? Yes. Karen Coates-Gustavon? Yes. Christine Spurns?
Yes.
Are we done? Angie, we're done.
The next item, set the meeting calendar for next year. We're going to have a meeting in June, on June thirteenth. You can write that on your calendar. And, um, I've suggested doing July and August at Duncan. So if you're all amenable to that calendar, I'll entertain a motion. You see, we added a meeting, changed to a location.
So wait, so locations, July and August?
Yeah.
Yeah, and June thirteenth. So the motion should be to approve the twenty twenty-four board meeting calendar as discussed.
Yep. That's a magic. Yep.
Because the other, because the other dates will be labeled as May, so some of them will come.
Got it. So who's gonna make the motion?
I will make that motion to approve the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule as amended and discussed.
Second?
I'll second.
Karen?
I had a question before. They'd always skip the June meeting until this year, and I don't have any problem having it, especially if I have a lot of stuff to push. My question is, especially since you're gone, so you need, you need a P-mice. It exists, you've never had any meetings, no. But we never have before. I know that they tell you if you, if you can't miss more than what it's for.
I was just gonna say, I don't know about any of the history, but I'm completely amiable to who's our schedule for the year. Like Kay, if you're going to go out of town.
I'm just, just a concern you raised, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm approval.
I just think sixty days is too long to go out of town, definitely.
Well, what we did was we, we delayed initially, we delayed the May meeting one week. And.
Yeah, I know, when, uh, when David was director, we didn't have one because it conflicted with a meeting year, one two. So meant he wouldn't be at the meeting, and so.
I think that what you said, he doesn't have anything going that week, so.
Like right now, I have.
Who does? Who does?
The good thing about that June, meeting June thirteenth, is people are there. And I can't do it there, so I'm not Thursday.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, so that was working.
All right. So we were in the process of voting. Were we all in favor?
All right.
Okay, no one was opposed? So you don't set it. Angie? Got that? Oh, we're down to the consent agenda. The minutes from both of the meetings that we had in November, and the donations, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Motion?
I need to accept.
Second? Lori? In favor? Opposed? Did I hear some ayes? Did I hear any opposition? Okay, I'm getting nervous. Angie, it's your turn.
Lori's take for president. Through November, the general fund, our total receipts are about one point, or two point one four million, and our expenditures are under one point eight million. Our general fund balance, I think, November is seven million, seven hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. We should end the year revenue-wise at two point three, so. We will end the year very well.
Do you have any major expenses this month?
We're getting there. Fiona would be the biggest, but that's, uh, we've quite paid for it yet.
Okay, because she usually tells us when there's, like, there's a sorry period, it's postponed.
Now, as far as, uh, anything that might be capital, anything we're, that I know we're looking at is, um, we're gonna get a quote to replace a few alarm heaters, I don't know. I will say that if the board remembers, um, we signed an agreement for a reserve study for the building, equipment, stuff like that, and, um, for Gettonton, our facilities manager. And for Gettlington, our facilities manager, he, he has made J A C stuff. I put a big worksheet together, went through a lot of stuff, so that we weren't only like trying to pull invoices, and talking about like five years. But we just remitted that retainer, so that's by the. And the, the rep came in to look at the buildings, and he said how well prepared we were, and he also said how well maintained our libraries are.
I wanted to publicly acknowledge Angie for the work she did for that. The finance documents were phenomenal, and also for the work that Kirk has done to maintain the facility, so. And just so you all are aware, the alarm heaters that she was mentioning, that's the first step in this process, before he even filed the report, he said, you've got multiple units here that end life, and you're gonna wanna replace those very soon. So that was just me walking around the building, and Lori said, well, see, we've all seen that side.
How does it work here in Nashville?
Uh, I do not.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve financials. Okay. Second? Karen? In favor? Opposed? Now we move on to some more financial business. Authorize the signings of the checking account.
Just a second.
Karen?
Okay, so.
No. Okay, well, we have to fill in the blanks. We have to give her a second to catch up.
I'm sorry.
You have the blanks filled in?
For?
For the authorized signers?
Right, the, the authorized signers will be entered into the minutes into the table with Kay, Will, and Stephanie. And this motion is so that, the motion is to approve the below listed individuals, and those are people on the table, as the only authorized signers on Pickaway County Libraries' below listed bank account with the savings bank. And this is effective one month twenty-four. We do this every year. All other individuals not listed shall be removed as signers on the account. This gives them instructions. They receive a copy of the minutes, and the officers and myself have to go into the bank, because officers have to be on the checking account. So the savings bank wants that in writing, and the, and the minutes is our form of doing that. We share that with them, and they tell me when the forms are ready, and then we have to go into the bank. Myself and assistant fiscal officer Shannon Turvey, we are the only authorized signers on the Star Ohio account. Star Ohio now requires two signers. It was just me. That's just a money market, we can move money back and forth, it's an investment account. That is a state investment pool. And I am the only signer on the U.S. Bank custody account for reader public funds investments. And the assistant fiscal officer is authorized to view account transactions and access account statements. No one, nobody else can be on that account, because you haven't had an investment training. Even though we have an advisor that takes care of that stuff, I have to be able, you know, I have to check all the investments and, and all that, so nobody else can be a signer on that. So that is the motion.
All right.
I need to.
That way you will set.
I need to accept that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you got your signers? All right. We're up to old business. So, the first item on our old business is to talk about the fourteen reconsideration forms that we have received, and how we want to, how we want to proceed. I asked Drew if he would tell us. The policies that we were using correctly in order to have this book in our, in our collection. That would be the first step to decide what we're gonna do.
Or instead of reading like twenty-five pages of policy?
He's gonna sum it up.
Just to skip, I was gonna say, or he can also just probably tell us what I think that he said to be called, which was.
I have something to say, yeah. And are we also gonna, are you also gonna address some of these?
Yeah, I would be happy to, if you'd, if you'd like me to.
I think the public might be interested, you know, that's true.
So for the record, my full recommendation to the board will be available in the minutes. First of all, thank you to the public for sharing your concerns. As I said, this is a summary of my recommendation to the board of this cited policy. There are many reasons why Making a Baby by Rachel Greener should remain in the collection, and specifically in the youth services collection. The policies outlined above support this recommendation. The book is intended and written for children. Public libraries are community institutions that have a mission to serve the educational needs of every child, adult, and family in community. Moving this book from the collection or moving it to the adult section would restrict access to children who may need it. The library's role is to provide access to information, non-prescriptive. Each family has the right to determine which library resources are acceptable for its children, and must afford the same right to other parents. Documentation was provided this evening from the county prosecutor's office stating as a legal opinion that this book is not pornography. We also had a recommendation from a family therapist, who said that after she saw the article in the Herald, she reviewed the book, and she now uses it as part of her practice talking to children and families about sexual health. June Green is the head of the Human Trafficking Coalition for Pickaway County. She has thirty years of social work experience, and she also believes that this book is well-written, and the illustrations are well-done. She agrees that this should also be used, this would be a great resource for parents and children, especially for families who may not be considered traditional. A retired library, high school, a middle school librarian, also called media specialist, shared her views that, she asked her to be anonymous, but she wanted to know, she wanted to say that every parent does have the right to choose what is best for their parents, and she does believe in intellectual freedom. And the last organization to submit a letter was from the Pickaway County Board of Development of Disabilities. Both the superintendent, Mike Pelk, and assistant superintendent Mary Rulebanks referred to statistics on the need for educational materials on, to prevent sexual assault, and the ability to educate those populations for reproductive health.
And Drew, you said, one of the first things you said was, you referred to the policies listed above.
Yes.
But I'd like to, I'd like you to say what those policies are.
Sure. So the selection of materials policy, section one of your selection. So there's both criteria there, and listed, the book has educational value, inclusive nature, recommended by professionals, availability to purchase, timeliness, and importance in contemporary society, suitability of subject and method of presentation to the intended audience, relationship to existing collection and the subject field, representation, expression of minority points of view, and physical suitability for library use and cost. The controversial content section, section four, A, B, and C were also cited. The responsibility for monitoring a child's reading, listening, and viewing rests with the chairman's parent or legal guardian. Selection of materials for the library is not restricted by the possibility that a child may obtain materials that their parents or guardians consider inappropriate. B, public libraries provide the vital opportunity to study various sides of an issue by obtaining materials containing opposing views on controversial topics, including those of an unorthodox or unpopular nature. Materials that meet the selection criteria guidelines will not be removed from the collection. Nor will materials lacking these qualities be added because of the pressure from groups or individuals. C, the library does not mark, label, or identify materials to show approval or disapproval of contents.
Is that the end?
Uh, that's for the material selection policy. Site the other ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to put our whole case out.
Okay.
Wait, I don't have that.
Well, I.
Oh, my God. Oh. The policy.
Yes. So policy two point two point two, this is included for reference in the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights. Books and other library resources should be provided for the interest, information, and enlightenment of all people of the community the library serves. I also included a portion in there that a person's right to use a library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views. I'll leave that to the policy, a second.
Okay. Well, as, as I see it, we have, we have some options, we can decide what we're going to do with the book. I, I know that we're trying to be respectful to all the library patrons, and to the entire community, I, I know we're trying to do the right thing. I'm gonna go out and leave here. I, I assume we have, we have three options. We can determine that the book has value, and tell our director to return it to its prior location on the shelf. We have strong, defensible policy to do that. He's just read it all to us. We have letters and public statement in support of providing access to this information. The book was purchased in line with our collection development policy. Prior to these requests for reconsideration, the book received little attention, only three circulations in two and a half years on the shelf. Apparently, it was checked out and viewed without incident by people who wanted the information. Three people.
And it was three years?
Yeah.
I don't know how that's covered in our due discussion policy.
The reading policy?
Isn't that, it's read in three years, would it have been read?
Uh, in three years, potentially, yes.
With three reads?
Yeah, we do have other materials that are similar, but that is part of the selection and reading process. If something was not in the question, it would be potentially.
And three reads in, three years would be not used?
Not used.
Well, it actually, it would be potentially, so if it is enough that it would be used, it would be a time frame thing, so if you had three reads in the beginning, and then not three reads, you know, for a couple of years, then it would be a new reading. But if it was like once a year, if it was read, then that would typically, it, it's a, we use, that is one piece of how we use reading, it's not the only piece, but it is something that we use to consider reading.
It's pretty lame, I'll check out. Low on the total for community interest. I, I think, Chris, can I ask people, do you have a policy on something else? Do we have, I don't know if it has in our policy. I think I have a chance to bring that up. Do we have a section for the Children's Internet Protection Act?
CIPA?
Yes, the CIPA.
This is not applicable.
I know that.
Okay.
But it's just applicable, it's a broad range. When CIPA was created, it was thought that we didn't have books under a microscope. It was really, it's focused about internet and children, children not being able to view everything on the internet that the adults in a library can. So a library can say, can go to the, or patrons can go to the librarians and say, can you unfilter the filter on the computer? And they can say, yes. So that's really what that Supreme Court decision was all about.
Then it's flexible?
It's flexible, but it's not flexible for children. So children, it's not, the CIPA is not flexible, and that children, the computers in the youth services, they cannot just look up anything and not do it. Those are thoughts. So, that does apply to us.
And no one can ask for the filter to remove.
Not children. An adult can in the adult section. Which is why I'm saying it does kind of pertain to our reading material also. And that, as that you. Because it's information, this is, this is a place of information of both printed material and internet, we do a lot here. Also about the rooms, and two, we can, not rent to, because we don't call, we don't ask for money, but who can, what do I say, use these rooms for what particular purpose? And that's all covering also.
So, our second option, as, as I see it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, because you know this is a work in progress. Um, our second option is, we can, we can tell Drew, you know, of the book, and we want it out of the collection. We, we, we have the power if we want to do that. But, I wanna make it clear that hardly anyone has really asked us to remove it from the collection. Almost, almost everyone has asked for it simply to remove. And you should also know that if we decide to move the book out of the collection, it's not really defensible in litigation based on a policy. We, we really can't defend that action. So our third action, our third option is, is we have to change policies, or, or whatever to, to solve the problem. So, it, it seems that maybe the first thing we should do is just agree that policy was followed when the book was bought. There was no mistake made, it was bought according to our collection development policy. And then if we wanna move on from there, we, we can move on from there, but, but initially today, we can, we could vote to say it was included in the policy in a, in a collection correctly, I mean, no illegality or help me here.
So we did that, okay. The, the policy covers us in its acquisition.
So, is that, have, have, have I addressed that?
Well, I don't think it just, the policy doesn't just cover us in, in the purchasing of the book, it, it covers the library, and not only the selection, the purchasing, but also having it here in the library, because there's, and, and, and I always make this point, Drew didn't buy this book, everybody keeps saying Drew bought this book, brought it in here, put it by the guinea pigs. This book was here before Drew even stepped in Pickaway County. So, the book has been here long before he has, so, you know.
I think we can establish it's not.
So, exactly. So, to, to, to follow our policy and just say, well, we followed the policy to buy the book, well, we're gonna put it up on the shelf, fifteen, put it up in the air. Well, we're gonna put it up on the shelf, fifteen, put it up in the air so nobody can see it or get to it. Isn't following this policy if you look at all the other things that talk about it not being censored and things of that nature that will provide this book, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, the selection policy has more in it than just picking that book out. You know, it goes into a lot more and, you know, when we start to look at moving that book to make it either any book, to make it more or less accessible, you know, I think that's where we start to question some of the policy that the library has as far as censorship and things of that nature. That was just my one fantasy, but the policy has more than just buying a book. And it's a lot more to find.
We've already agreed that we need to do a deep dive of our policy. Talk about some of the reasons.
Absolutely. Because it's very difficult.
And even if we approve this motion now?
What's the motion?
Well, the idea of putting it on the shelf, we can always change that if we change our policy later on. We would not, we wouldn't.
We disagree.
I just want to be specific, putting it out on the shelf. It is on the shelf right now, correct?
It is correct.
Technically checked out.
It is actually back under. For clarification, it was never removed for any purpose. It was always available in the public. In fact, that falls our policy.
So, that's why I was thinking, we don't have a motion to put that on the shelf. It's on the shelf.
Okay. You want her to keep it shelved? So, well, the motion is that it was purchased correctly. It was purchased properly.
Well, I don't, we have a motion, don't we, Chris?
Yeah, it's under all ten, under all ten.
Oh, oh, sorry. Good.
To Keep Making a Baby by Rachel Green is shelved in the Juvenile Nonfiction Collection. And it was selected following the library's two point seven point one material selection policy.
Hold on a second.
Page three.
Letter A is the reconsideration appeal of Making a Baby by Rachel Green. So, Drew has said what he said to the public with the, how many? Reconsiderations, do we have?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Fourteen reconsiderations. Okay. So, that's letter A. That's Drew's thing, right there. Okay. Then, why are we going directly? We're not gonna have any discussion. We're just gonna go right into a motion that, oh, it's on the shelf.
Putting Robert's rules.
But I didn't make a motion for that. And I'm not, I'm not okay with motioning. That should be out of discussion.
That's what you're doing now, right?
No, I'm not doing that.
No one made the motion.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm not moving to keep it on the shelf. I'm just gonna say that right now.
So, we discuss it before the motion?
Let's talk about it.
Well, some, some of the Robert's rules, we need to, we need to...
You kept saying motions, but no one said it.
And then we discuss it. And then we can make the motion.
Yeah, that's true. I just want to make sure we have discussion.
Oh, we will. So, we need to put the motion on the table.
Again, so we can officially discuss it.
Would anyone be brave?
Not there being brave. I'll put the motion on the table.
Yeah, and then we start discussing.
And will, okay. Okay, and will. All right, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, since I made the motion, I'd like to start the discussion. First of all, it's clear that the material selection policy states in part, which Drew already read, "Selection of materials for the library is not restricted by the possibility that children may obtain materials that their parents or guardians consider inappropriate." It also refers to, and I don't know where that section is, Drew, tell me about really, talks about not being subject to... We have to do what the policy says regarding of public pressure. To do otherwise, as you indicated, Chris, is to open us up to legal liability, which is not where we want to be. Any of these policies can be changed at any time if the board deems it necessary and does the work. Our policy manual is evaluated every so often and looks at your instincts. But right now, we have a policy that's clear and succinct. We're required to comply with the library policy so as not to open us up to legal liability. And I'd like to point out, we have seventeen other books on reproduction. They're dealing with making a baby and the birth of a baby. These are all in the juvenile section, correct? It's a slippery slope, folks. Somebody's not gonna like one of these books.
Didn't you mean that like books about the helicopter?
Race relations, LGBTQ. It's a slippery slope, but I'm done.
More discussion?
Kay is right. I mean, there are seventeen books. They are in the youth services area. And I know some of the ones that Drew brought in, myself, other people, and we checked them out. This one definitely pertains to girls and reproduction. So, I guess, this is a thing. We also have policy, Anna Kim called, this is what I was asking before. She sent an email to me today. She couldn't be here. And I'll just let her redo the whole thing, but she said, "At previous library board meetings, the director has said that parents should be responsible for the resources their children use and seek from the library, and I agree with that. However, if parents don't want their preschoolers exposed to books about controversial topics yet, then ambushing them with those at library storytimes not only goes against 'parents are responsible,' quote unquote, but also contradicts the Pickaway County's library's published values statement of, quote, 'We pledge to promote a welcoming environment,' found on the website over the Alas page." So, she goes on to talk about the welcoming environment. And I guess this book in particular, and I know there isn't, there isn't. You have to follow policy, what Kay said. But we are having a problem right now with our community and their standards and our collection specifically, community drip, that's what it says in the ALA. I don't want our community to believe that we are ignorant and that we're not listening.
Did she quote any book that, I mean, surely this book was not used to ambush anybody at Storytime?
She's talking about what happened at Storytime this week. And I don't know the title of the book. I know Chris has asked Drew the title of the book that was read at Storytime, and no one can say anything else. So...
I will say that we have most of those three times each week, and so I'm not aware of what's going on.
I don't know. I don't know the title of the book. I know it's controversial. And so, people just show up. So, this is what happens. So, people show up for Storytime, and it's a controversial subject about families, different kinds of families, and they weren't aware of it beforehand because there's not a list that's put out beforehand. Except, I don't know what the title is. I'm annoyed.
We don't know how controversial this could be.
No, we don't.
Right. I haven't seen the book.
Tell me, see it.
Exactly right.
So, can you relate this to the book that we're talking about right now?
So, then we have that. Prior to that, this was a year ago. I mean, this was way before Drew. I want everyone to know that. This is established. A year ago, the bookmobile, well, actually, let me back up. As far as I know, any book in the youth services library section could go onto the bookmobile. Am I correct? The possibility can go on the end cap for promotion or on, in Storytime and on a bookmobile. Is that correct?
It is correct with the caveat that the outreach staff select materials for the communities they serve. And so, you're gonna see things more of interest to children. There would be some things for adults, some DVDs.
You cannot, right, like older people.
Depending where they're going or what they're doing.
But I could take wordbooks, don't I?
Correct, in the youth section.
Yeah.
So, it is definitely true.
Okay, so just for the case of children. I get that. So, in the youth services, they can go in and pick any books they want to be on the A-bookmobile, read in Storytime, and on the end caps or wherever, the tiered displays. Everything can be on that, right? Can be used for those purposes. Well, a year ago, we have a situation, had a situation, sorry, with an elementary school in Pinewood County. And there was an incredibly controversial book put on there that had been in the children's youth area. It wasn't this one. It was another one called Wait What. And it was checked out. Because obviously, parents do not have control, whether they want to say they do or not. They don't have control and neither do even teachers or anyone else on the bookmobile. They cannot vet every single book in there before a child goes on the bookmobile. Just like a parent cannot stand and check and vet every single book on a bookshelf before they let their child come in and pick the book that they might want to look at. I mean, that's, that's why this gets difficult. And that's why the location really matters. So, this elementary school, the teacher called the library and was incredibly upset that it was sent to their school and said, "Do not ever bring this back again." So, we now have two instances. Now, we have a parent, found above, is appalled by its content. People are not asking for censorship. People are not asking for it to be banned. No one wants to blacken out pages on it. This isn't, this isn't a problem with, we don't like the word that's used in Hefin or whatever it is. People really are just asking for what I think are just like semantics. And I really, I feel as a ward of Pickaway County that we have been appointed by leaders in our community. I think that everyone wants us just to listen to these people. They're not asking for the movie stars. They're not coming in here with a pitchforks and saying, "Man, the book, man," that's not who these people are. And they just don't want, whatever it may be, they can agree with a book or not, to be out in the children's, talking about children. And children can walk over to the adult section. We can have a section for them for like family planning, family whatever, whatever you want to call it. Whatever. We can talk about that, about materials and all the safety. But if we did have a section, that then the parents can just, just to allow them, like make it welcoming so the parents can be allowed a little more control, that's all they're asking. It's, like I said, they're not asking for the movie stars and not coming on the pitchforks. And there are so many topics, like Kay was saying, that could be controversial. I mean, what about, what if there's a book that's created on gun clean and gun use, firearms? And it happens to be made for children five to eight years old? Would we stick that in it? I hope not. I'm not all for that at that age. But if we did have a section that goes for a more sensitive material, that why would that be so terrible? We're not banning children from walking into the adult section.
See, that's what we did. I would have no problem if there was a book in the kids' section on firearms, safety, and things of that nature. There are families that believe in guns. I am a ton myself. And I want to start teaching my child at age six or seven gun safety. And there happens to be a book over there on that, that book is entirely appropriate for me and my son. Maybe for you and your daughter, it's like, I mean, we don't want to do that. We don't believe in guns. We don't... Then, then you don't pick it up and look at it. I mean, that's the way I look at it. So, to have that gun book over there, to me, is no different than the Making a Baby book. Absolute no difference.
Wait, maybe if you still have books, still in the library, on the bookshelf? Your kid wouldn't be able to find them.
Well, see, I was saying to you about that very same thing. You know, it takes to move this book, hoping to be a better selection. And then mom comes in with her two or three children, or dad comes in with his two or three little children. And dad's over in the adult section looking for a book on whatever. And the two or three kids are running around, and one of whom sees the book Making a Baby. And we moved it to the adult section.
Right.
And the little kid sees it in there and picks it up. He or she still wouldn't be able to pick that book up and look at it in the adult section if mom and dad aren't policing and watching what that child is doing. It doesn't matter where you put that book. You put it in the kids' section, you put it in the adult section. If mom or dad are over in the adult section and they've got three little ones following them, and they're not watching, and they pick up Making a Baby, then what do we do? Okay, we moved it from the children's, we moved it to the adults. Now, where do we move it? Do we put it in a lock? Do we lock it up somewhere? And you have to show ID to check it out? That's the path we start heading down.
Okay, so, hold on. So, I totally get that, though. And by the way, my daughter and I, or she's in the shooting sports for each one. So, I was just trying to use a controversial subject as an example. But if you have it in the adult section, of course, things are gonna happen. Kids are gonna go over there and see it and whatever. You can't, you can't be a hundred percent this or a hundred percent that. But I think I lost my train of, oh, I'm sorry.
I will say, one day, maybe they'll figure it out. A teacher told me that no child is ever going to be attracted to that book. That they check out books about, even if they did go to the nonfiction section, which is not. I mean, they stay in picture books, okay? But even if they did go to the nonfiction section, they would check out the books about planes and cars and dinosaurs and Pokemon and that they would look at. People, a wheelchair, uh-uh.
And it would go, like, they wouldn't even look at it.
Which makes one think it's more of an adult issue than...
That's an interesting way to show it. That's an interesting...
We can't hear her, Kay, Stephen.
Okay.
I said, which leaves one to think it's more of an adult issue than a protecting children issue. I mean, my child, my toddler picked up a book, I think, first of all, I agree with Chris. They wouldn't pick it up, that particular book. They would look for Paw Patrol and Rocket City. Right, right. And if you had a child that seemed to be concerned about looking at that book, it would have no meaning to them if they opened the pages. And if it were an older child, the worst that would happen is they'd bring the book to their parent. And the parent has a choice at that point in time to, let's sit down and talk about this, let's take this book home? Or this is something you need to look at when you're older. Sorry, I thought I'd give you some time to do that.
And then it's listening, can't... Just to, honestly, the kids, like, they can go over it, so we're not censoring it from all kids and... Oh, I know what it was. Okay, I got it. We definitely censor books, if you want to use that terminology, which I don't like to, but we censor this whole library by areas, right? Like, not completely censor, but we divide this library for a reason. We don't have children's Storytime and the genealogy, okay? That would be very exciting. We don't really want children running around in that area either. I've been to Storytimes many times, and when I go to genealogy, I don't want toddlers around in there. So, we do censor areas. I know that we do have rated R movies out here in the DVD section, do we not?
We do, but I want to very clearly clarify policy. The library does not censor. That isn't policy, I have cited.
No, I'm talking about, you're just missing what I'm saying. You're missing what I'm saying then.
She said it's subtle censorship.
Dividing areas.
Dividing adult for children.
I mean, you're smart enough to know what I'm talking about.
The library does not censor.
Got it.
And you're welcome to use another word, but the policy clearly states the library does not censor.
What word would you like to separate?
Intended audience would be fine. Intended audience would be fine.
Intended audience in dividing areas. For rooms. So we don't have, like I said, we don't have board books back in the genealogy section. We don't have Nine and a Half Weeks, I hope, back in the children's section. We do have a DVD area back there. Now that would be appalling, I would think, if someone, and children have their own library records, they go over and they pull out Nine and a Half Weeks. Well, look, says it's fun, I can learn a lot about sexism too, and yes, you can, and food, might be considered a food book. You don't have that back there, for good reason. Because it's just kind of obvious. I just, I find like, this is kind of, it is the obvious. Like, this book, it's not terrible, some of it is scientific, it's very pictorial, graphic, for children, just to, I mean, I think they look like little dolls on the cover, that was my first. I don't think they look like actual real people, that's the way I think it's illustrated intended, intended to be. At the back of the book, Chris, can you name the book? I mean, it's not just science-based. The, most of the book is. It's fine. I don't really have a problem with this book, I'll be honest. What happens when a baby is born too soon? I mean, that's important, because a lot of kids might have premature brothers and sisters. I'm trying to find it, I don't love to miss in the wild, but, um, there was a part, I thought about gender affirming in here. So maybe, I know I'm a little, but I just can't find it. Anyway, why do some babies not grow? I mean, this is not a terrible book. I just think, like, if I was a kid and I opened it, how does a kid even know what in the world they're talking about? Um, in the children's section, and the photographs, how are they going to understand what is going on between a man and a woman?
Right.
This is supposed to grow.
Love, I agree.
Right, like, this doesn't say anything about love, that that's why he's on top of her. A kid's not going to always understand. This man on top of this woman is maybe a good thing. This has a little picture, the graphic, they're not going to understand that either. I just, I don't think it's a bad book. I just think it's age-appropriate for, to go through parents, for kids of the age group that's supposed to be four. Like I said, I mean, this is supposed to be for kids like five years old. Are you serious? How's a five-year-old even understand? Because they, I, they probably aren't seeing their parents do this in bed. I'm sure they'd want to unsee that the rest of their lives. Right? You don't want to see your parents doing this, okay? I don't think I'm going down on a limb. So how do they know what's going on?
And I'm all for following library policy. My, this is just such a random thought, but I have a daughter who has a background in clinical psychology, and she said to me, and it's really stuck with me, you don't give a five-year-old who wants to learn numbers and math, a calculus book. So I just want to be really careful. I, I respect the policies of the library. I expect, I respect freedom, and the ability to, for us to come here, and people to post things on Facebook, and to congregate here. At the same time, I think we need to be really, really careful and thoughtful, as I do think we have been. I appreciate the letters of verification from professionals. At the same time, I copied all the letters that I received from the public. We have social workers that have written letters, we have a nurse that has written a letter, so, you know, it's all, it's all about balance. This is one opinion, our letters are another opinion. We have to have respect for one another, and, and the discourse that, that's going to derive that, you know, whatever those options are, you know, moving it, leaving it where it is. I researched what other libraries have done, is this book has come to controversy in other libraries.
Yes.
Some of them kept it on the shelf where it was, some of them actually moved it. So, and then moving it is that censorship. You know, I have grappled with all of this, spent so much time reading all of this. I just want to do the right thing with everyone.
And what solution would you propose?
I, I don't think that, I don't think that our public is asking us for it to be banned. I don't think I'm asking, I don't think I'm asking for that either.
For, for the record, we do have multiple reconsideration forms to say ban. This process starts with one form, or a dozen.
Okay, then, how many want to ban, how many want to ban this?
Two people in writing have said ban.
Two.
Of fourteen letters that we received?
But all, all it requires is one reconsideration form.
Right. For the ban. So we can probably go on ban or not ban, if you have to deal with them.
So we received fourteen reconsideration forms.
Correct.
And you've responded to one hundred percent of those, as I've read in your director report, so thank you. And then of those, we have received two appeals.
Sorry, four appeals.
Four appeals, okay.
The reconsideration forms had two bans.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, that's good. Thank you for laying it out.
And the other twelve were?
Any variation of appeals.
So we had a total of four appeals, is that correct? Of fourteen?
But, but again, it only takes one to get us to this point.
Yes, correct. I understand. Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know, I'm sure, but appeal process. I know that we don't have an appeal process in our policy. That seems to be something we want to work on. People didn't know what to do, so they just didn't appeal. I heard that from you.
I informed everyone that they had the right to appeal.
Yeah. And how to do it, you know? Because there are many...
I've seen CC on every email I've sent to every person. Every single question that go to a consideration form, I provided the criteria, and I explained that they have the right to appeal.
Oh, yeah, no, I haven't. You did a great job.
I have a right here, you may choose to appeal your response, if you disagree with the selection of this item, and will be referred to Pinewood County Board trustee, final decision from Children's Considerations, eyes of the Board Trustees. Every person receives that response.
We, no, what I mean is, we didn't, we don't have in our policy how they can appeal.
It's under Section 5B.
But it's vague. I, I understand what you're saying.
It's very good.
It doesn't necessarily say, you need to submit form X, Y, Z to such and such a person.
To the board, they, they work with...
And that's such a policy thing that the committee's going to, going to work on. We're going to tie that up.
How, okay, I have a question. How many times has this occurred? How many appeals in our history has this board had to deal with and appeal?
I can, I'm probably the longest standing person at the table. I'm in the third year of my second term, so I've been on the board for ten years, and this is the first one I see.
Okay, I understand. So we don't have, that leaves the groundwork for me to, I think, establish here, we do not have a community of people who are bookbanners, who are for censorship. They do not come in here every year, "We don't like this, we don't like that." This happened to be particularly sensitive. And the story that I was telling you about at this particular elementary school, it was little-known, but I did find out about it, and I spoke to the principal. This wasn't hearsay.
Is that one of the books on, of seventeen?
It's called Wait What?
Oh.
I don't know.
No, I don't think it's on there.
D-A-I-T.
Sorry, got to get the...
Wait on off what?
No, it's...
What's the subject name?
It's more sexual, no, not reproduction, not like total reproduction. It's more way of sexual, and, but it's for children. It's for the same age group, and it was on a Book Mobile. So now, this is, we have...
Now, parents have no, no way to screen that book.
No way to know, got neither did the administrators of the school, and they were like, "You've got to be kidding me." So now we've established twice, we have issues with books coming from the services program, not program, sorry, area, which I believe is caused by a logistics problem, and I totally get you, Will, as adult, like, you don't want to be down a slope, absolutely. And so this isn't easy. But everything back there, because it's youth, is definitely free-for-all. It should be able, it should be able to be checked out. Little children at these schools, they have their own library cards, they start in, like, kindergarten, their own library cards, and they go on, they can check out anything they want, and that's great. I just am so supportive of that. It's like their first little piece of freedom, that they can feel like a big person. And they love their Book Mobile ladies, they really do. And so I know that there have also been homeschooling groups, and crossroads, Christian schools, who have spoken out about not having, or possibly not having, the Book Mobile come to them ever again. It is all because of this book. And that's our community, which then leads me to my next point, is the financial aspect of all of this. We have fiduciary responsibility to this library. People are calling our state representative. He doesn't really enjoy getting these calls, and he is not going to support the library, and neither will other state representatives who are elected by our people in our county. That is our community, whether you really like it or not, and you may not like the books they like, and vice versa, but we're here to serve them. And we have this huge project called Imagin, it's called, what's it called? Imagination Station, yes, thank you. Imagination Station. And how many millions do they want, are they asking for? This is serious. I mean, we rented this space to them, we all voted, maybe no more, I didn't, but we all voted for them to have this space to turn it into a children's museum. It is a serious financial risk that we are taking, and they are taking. The Pinewood Community Foundation. Millions of dollars are going to be needed from this community to support that museum. And in turn, those millions are not going to come if the people who are going to come to this library stop coming. It also brings me to grants. I know that many of the programming events put on in the back for the youth services are created by money from grants. And the people that come in are counted. The large percentage of those people are homeschooling parents who bring their kids. We have almost five hundred homeschooling kids in this county, and that's not including the city's over, let's just count. So we have, we're now into a little bit of a financial pickle right now, because of the way we live. So I'd like to remedy that. I just, I'm looking for sort of a temporary, firstly, I'm looking for a temporary remedy for this. We can work on a policy later, for this leader, who's going to be a solid year, which is a great, which we have to do. And I would love to come up with an area, just to give some people a little more control. I don't want to be tamed after these people. My daughter's older, I, I'm not worried about her coming over to pick up, but a lot of parents are concerned with their kids doing. And I'm just trying to listen to, that's all.
What would you propose as a solution?
I saw...
You, you haven't said anything that any of us don't agree on. So what is a solution?
I would love to see, I know Will does not agree with this, but I would love to see a family planning, just specifically for these books, not for all the others, reproductive, we could call it, whatever, I don't know. We have to, we probably want to see, okay, what are the books? How many do we have in family plan? Maybe, actually, we need more. Maybe, seriously, maybe we do, to fill out that section, and this would certainly be a good, big insight.
Are you, are you proposing books on gun safety, and the Holocaust, and, and all those, and other sensitive things, or just family planning?
Right now, I think let's just deal with the problem.
And where, what would you do with this collection? Like, what geography would you give it?
The adult section. And then parents can go over there, they can grab the book, they can go back to the back in the beanbags and look at it, and the children, we have this beautiful lounge area, they could go up here, heck, they could go to the genealogy section. Nobody's going to care, as long as the...
So what would you propose, if we just take the J office, and, and make it an adult book? Put it in that location?
Why not? And if we have, like, seventeen books? If we have, and you know what? We could even put a section, put a section in the back saying, "Family Planning," and have a little sign that says, "Please be directed to, you know, reference libraries, area, and adults section." Ask the library if you want one.
And if you consider that restrictive, is that censorship that they have to ask, is that a question for that book?
Well, I'm going to flip this around. Do we need children asking for this book? How about a parent asking? I mean, is this really something you want a five-year-old to come up and ask? I mean, you're making a baby. Ms. Sharon?
I don't think that's ever going to happen.
I don't either. It circulates three times, and two and a half.
You're making one. That's a...
The one thing I, the one thing I'd like to comment on is, Cameron's saying, you know, we have a huge popu, a huge percentage of population that's up and arms and hired up about this, and throwing a whole sausage for nickel, and pennies, and dollars, and all this. You received how many letters? Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Official, yes. What's the city population? Eleven thousand, thirteen thousand?
Fourteen.
County population, fifty?
Fifty, eighty-five.
How many emails did we get?
I couldn't put a number to it, but...
Was it more than fourteen?
It was more than fourteen, yes.
Over fifty? So there were people who complained, but didn't submit the official table?
But, but it was also people supporting it.
I'm just asking that we be realistic about the numbers when we look at, we can either look at all numbers, or if we want to look at a percentage, of like, that's fourteen out of fifty thousand, Pinewood County is, that number isn't significant. If you have influenza outbreak in town, and fourteen people come down with the flu, it's not diagnosed as an epidemic or a pandemic, it's fourteen people with the flu. I, I would struggle to say fourteen people out of a population of fifty, sixty thousand is a large number of people. We've had maybe twenty people on this side over here that have opposed, in whatever fashion, show up. To me, if there was a large population that opposed, this room wouldn't even hold all this stuff. So I just want to make sure we keep that number in mind.
It's fifty thousand in the county.
Yeah, that, I keep that number in mind. Fourteen people have expressed interest, or dissatisfaction by a letter, and we've got twenty, twenty-five, maybe thirty show up here. So me, using a mathematical calculation, that's not a big percentage of the population that's opposed to it. And to let anybody threaten us with money, I've been in the public sector forever, when you start to bow down to that, well, I'm not going to support this, or I'm not going to give you money if you don't do this for me. You know, if, if the person feels that strongly about it, then they don't have to vote for it, or, or make money to it, or, or whatever, you know, there's, that's, you can't please everybody based off of fourteen letters that you're receiving in opposition to that book.
I don't think we can avoid the fact that we have a policy now. The board may choose to make changes in that policy in the future, but we have a policy now, that has to comply with regards to reconsiderations that are before us. And I'm, I'm also concerned, I would like to think, and I don't mean it in a negative way, but I would like to think that a lot of this arose, that this arose because a toddler accidentally got the book, and was upset, and gave it to the parent. I think we have to all be aware, we're all adults in this room, we all read the news, well, we, we get our news from some sources, various sources these days, but I think we have to be aware that this is not an isolated incident in Pinewood County. This is happening all over the country with regards to a lot of books. And we have to be aware of that, and we have to be... And we have to be aware of that, and we have to be careful. The webinar will point you that out, and it's not an isolated incident.
I mean, the, the argument I've seen posted in various social media about this is, well, I'm a mom, I bring my four children in, I can't possibly watch them all. You know, and, and, and I only have one child, so for me and my wife, it was probably easier to watch our one individual child. But when I see the mom and dad say, well, I have four children, you can't expect me to keep an eye on them all. I, I kind of think back, you know, would you go to the Pickway County Fair, or make the Ohio State Fair, leave your four children, and say, hey, kids, listen up. Mom can't watch all four yet, so somebody's probably not going home with mom and dad tonight because I can't keep an eye on them all. Good luck, try to stay with me. You know, and then at the end of the day, after everybody's done eating cotton candy, well, little Timmy's not with us, I couldn't watch all four. You don't do that. So if, if that, if, if books such as this or the other seventeen are that offensive or not to somebody's liking, and, and I don't, don't take this neck, we, that person, whoever they may be, needs to figure out a way to keep an eye on their children, whether it's you break it up, you bring somebody else with you, you have an older teenage sibling, you know, you, you, you can't expect somebody else to parent your child because you can't keep an eye on all three, four, five, however many children you have. And I know that's going to be, it's easy for you to say, you only have one, that was my choice to have, we have one child. If it was their choice to have four, it's their responsibility to watch what they're picking up book-wise, what they're picking up walking down the street, you know, if you're walking down the street with your kids and they find a cigarette laying there, no, I couldn't watch him, he picked up a cigarette and stuck it in his mouth, you know? It, it's the parent's responsibility to manage, to watch what your child does, whether it's a book, at a grocery store, wherever it may be. So, that's just kind of my take on it being a, a, a parent's responsibility. And Kay kind of said, you know, maybe it's not so much a, a child issue as it is a, a parent issue with this book, and that's how I see it. Would, would I, if my son was four or five, would I sit down and read that book with him? Or, you know, I look back at how he was, I probably wouldn't, I'd feel weird about it. Mom may do it, you know, my, my wife was really good about that kind of stuff. Um, she was just a lot better than I was. Maybe she would. Maybe it's not right for Karen, and, and when her daughter was young, you know, she'd be opposed, and maybe I, my wife liked it, you know? It's, it's going to be different for everybody, and if it's not a book that you support or you don't like, walk on by, tell your old father, you know, hey, that's not a book for us, we're not going to take a look at that, or we're not going to check that out, and you move on to the next book with the world of, for kids to watch in your heart, with...
Yeah. I have a question. Do we have a family planning section in the adult section?
Well, I'm sure there's other books at that hall, but...
Okay, that's why you asked.
Yeah.
When you're alive, it's time to hear. That's why I was like, I don't know what courage to be. Um, so we do have a family planning section. So we already have the section. I mean, like I said, I don't think, or I think we all agree here, a kid is not going to be entertained by that book. Why do we need to have it in the youth section, I guess? Why is that put in it, why can't we, why, why isn't it better?
The reason I can answer that is because it's written on the children's level. It's written on the children's level, and it's, and it was, um, recommended by School Library Journal, and a wonderful, which are children's book reviewers.
I know that, Chris, I know. What?
I'm just stating, it's based for why it's in the children's level.
Oh, I see where you're saying. But the subject matter, the subject matter is adult.
Well, and, and I will say that, that the vocabulary, it, it doesn't need words, I mean, it, it, you know, I just saw surrogate.
No, that's right, or, I mean, see, that's what, um, that's also, I don't, that is...
They, they don't, they don't, they use the correct term.
Yes.
That's a good thing, and maybe it's a bad thing.
Well, I think it's a good thing, I think it's a good thing, but I don't think it would make any sense for a five-year-old. And so that makes my point, why don't we just move it into a family planning section that we already own? And just call it a day, for goodness sakes.
What's in a ten-year-old's section?
They're not going to know what surrogate is either. You're not going to understand it either, Will.
A ten-year-old, they're not, like, I mean...
Do you know, do they know what a surrogate is? They won't even know how to pronounce it.
I don't know.
Are you kidding me?
A question, the policy clearly says... By our current policy, a ten-year-old can be in our library without a permit.
Yes, oh, yeah.
So, a ten-year-old, a ten, yeah, well, like I said, they dive into the policy.
Because I know that's difficult for librarians to back.
I think a ten-year-old could, maybe he'll...
I do not think a ten-year-old...
That's pretty quick, isn't it?
It is.
It is, I don't think a ten-year-old knows what a surrogate is. Unless they have soap operas. Because I know when I was young, that's how I learned what a surrogate is. It was, it was because of soap operas. It, I mean, it's, it's, seriously, I don't think it's a bad book at all, but they're not going to pull that out and know, and hide one here. What anything in that book says is serious.
We've, I think, we've had this around for quite a while now. We have a motion on the floor. Angie, would you read the motion back? Can you do that?
The motion was first, seconded?
Yep.
And to keep Making a Baby by Rachel Green, are shelved in the Juvenile Nonfiction Collection as it was selected following the library's two-point-seven-point-one materials selection policy.
Okay. So we can vote. Yes, to put it back on the shelf, or we can vote. Your motion, you are right, thank you, to continue its existence on the shelf.
On that particular shelf.
Yeah. Or we can amend it, that, I mean, we could just, I mean, you, you folks made that, made the motion, so you would have to pass an amendment, um, to alter it, to change it through.
The motion was made, stated on, on...
Yes, see, that's why I didn't want them to be read or discussed.
That's the motion that was made in second, and so I, I, at that point, you need to vote on that motion, right?
And they can amend it before we vote on it. Or they can take it back.
They can take it back.
They can pull it back. But we had to have a motion, we had to talk about it. We can, we can, um, um, just vote to take that word out, if that's, you know, you guys made the motion. Change it or pull it back.
I don't think we needed to have had a motion in order to discuss something. Because like, when you have an ordinance, you don't have to move to accept an ordinance before you discuss it. So that's why I did not, that's why I was against having a motion on the table, because then you're going to get, you know, then you're going to take a vote.
I think that's entirely, when you're talking about a, a city ordinance versus, versus a policy at a library or a, a council, I mean, it might be, it could be a significant difference when you're discussing the city ordinance versus...
It's, no, it's just the way the, no, it's just the way the meeting's made. It's not about whether it's important to...
The point that I wanted to make, Chris, it was time to discuss it.
The floor was open for discussion.
Yes.
The floor, that's my point, though, I just wanted the floor to be open for discussion, not having a motion made so that we could discuss it. Because...
But you can still vote against the motion.
Yes, but you'd still have to, okay, nevermind. You're not getting a vote. I, I can't do that, I thought I explained it.
So, you know, if you want to pull your motion back, I, Karen, one more time, because I don't understand what you're saying.
It's okay. I wanted to discuss it before we made, like, I didn't want this to, I've never seen in an agenda that you have motion, motion. No, you don't have motion, you have an agenda and you have the topic for discussion. And then you discuss it, and then if you agree to, okay, someone wants to make a motion to go ahead and do a, or something, then you just do that, you don't have it written in the agenda, does that make sense?
Does it matter at this point if we've had ample discussion? I mean, is there anything else you want to put on the floor?
So you don't have to clear emergency comments, and, and proceed right away without keeping...
Well, then that's, no, that's for a different, that's for another reading, we need to have three readings, yes.
But you can clear emergency and skip past all that.
I thought that, so the... The board has actually done both. We have had motions on the table.
We're really, we're just going to have the motions, but...
Yes, exactly, yes. My point is they wouldn't put a motion, you wouldn't put a motion in the agenda, you would just put the topic for discussion, and then the...
Let the motion come from the discussion.
Yes.
I am perfectly comfortable with the motion being changed if you both decide to, to rescind your motion?
No.
I'm not going to...
I, 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 I don't want to rescind it because right now we're following the policy of the library, and I don't want to make that motion to dischange what the library policy says, that it's a... We're going to try and, we start this, making the rules on the fly. But I, I, I won't rescind my second on that.
Oh, hold on, Karen, second minute. You seconded?
Yeah, I didn't second it.
No, I, I apologize, I thought it was Katie.
Okay, well then, I didn't want the motion, then we have...
That was my point from the beginning.
And we have a motion on the floor. Have, have we had enough discussion?
I just need everything restated, so I understand exactly what I'm, um, what you said.
And to keep it as is, Angie, are you...
Can you restate the motion for...
Thank you.
To keep Making a Baby by Rachel Green, are shelved in the Juvenile Nonfiction Collection as it was selected following the library's two-point-seven-point-one materials selection policy.
The law vote is affirming that, the policy, that's why I'm voting.
No.
That, I'm voting that it's staying on the shelf.
In this, wait on, that was what the...
I think, sorry, I don't mean to, I don't mean to be laborious, but I see what I understand. The reconsideration was Drew, what he had done, what he'd sent to everyone, he read yours, and what we all went over, and you asked all this, yes. Then, underneath it, we shouldn't have had this motion already created. That should have been after our discussion of the reconsideration paperwork and the appeal. What I'm saying is, this motion should be, no, boy, you could do it again, now it's a motion. But it, it should never have been, because I wanted to make a motion to have it moved, and I'm not given that opportunity. Adam, because the motion was already written in, it was already cut and dried, that this is a motion to keep it on the shelf, and that's not what our people want, and, okay, not doing it the accepted way.
Karen, we always put language of motions on the agenda, that was his rec, that's Drew's recommendation.
That's why I never seen it before.
We didn't just put it on the agenda, that's his recommendation.
Thank you. So here's...
And there's other motions on here, is, is to guide the meeting.
Okay, I understand that. Here's something, so, hold on a second, about this motion for everything to be, and it was, it's a lot of times, not...
Because if we don't do that, then, then it gets thrown off. Of course, that's why we, we do suggest the motions, so the appropriate business gets in the news.
So who wrote up this suggested motion?
That was my recommendation.
That was his recommendation, that I put on the agenda, it's a recommend, it doesn't mean you have to, it doesn't mean that you absolutely have to follow it. Now all of a sudden, okay, someone put this on the agenda, that's, that's not what, that's not correct.
We have another motion, if you want.
You have to vote on the first one.
Oh, no, but I mean, okay.
They're asking me to...
She, she can make, yeah, well, that's okay, okay.
We just, you either have to rescind your, your motion, or we have to defeat it.
Wait, hold on a second, I'm not ready to do this. So this whole motion thing, I just want to establish for everyone, and I don't think this is even still being recorded, but we are all very capable and very degreed people up here. We know how to run business meetings, all of us, we've all sat on boards. We've been elected officials, we've sat on, uh, other appointed boards. We do not need the motions written out for us, especially when it's a discussion. Now, it is very helpful, like in some of the financial things that we're going over, but we do not need the...
And I've been instructed to read what the motion is.
Yes.
And like Karen just said, they're wrong all the time, they're telling us one...
But I think David did that.
Yeah, he did.
Yes, we did. He did?
Yeah, that's how we...
Okay, I guess I'm just sensitive on this one.
That's how we...
But this was, I just wanted us, I guess, for discussion, so, I just, I was like, why is that motion on there, or, I guess, I'm just overly sensitive for that.
Okay, someone in here...
Right. Oh, I saw it earlier in the thing, too.
That's what happened at the last meeting. Every, it got off course, and that's why things are on the agenda. If, if you don't want motions on there, then the president needs to come up with the motions during the meeting. Those motions are suggestive motions, right?
The president usually does.
I'm sure for the most part, yeah.
No, they follow the agenda.
Right.
We've always had suggestive motions, not for everything. She knows what words need to be in the motion.
Right, and like, for a lot of the financial stuff, you do.
And when we're appointing people and doing the official business. I know, but we didn't instruct them to make a motion at that tone, is what I'm trying to say. The motion is suggested because it's Drew's recommendation.
Okay, so anyway, discussion, I just didn't, I was thinking, since it was a discussion, and it was this big hot topic, we didn't really need to do that. So anyway, go ahead.
Um, just trying to think about Robert's rules here. How many, how many votes do we have to have to pass, uh, do we, do we have to have a court, we have to have four votes to pass? Because there's five of us here, so... Well, if we vote this and we defeat it, um, Karen can make another motion, we can, we can do that, or either one, if you want to rescind it?
No.
Well, then I guess, I guess we, we've all done it, and you want to take, you, you have to take a vote, or are we raising our hands?
I, I will write down the is and nays. We can all throw the motion, and whoever eyes, I will write this down, I will write the nays, and if it passes, then it's...
I'll call for the, I'll call for the motion. Those are voting. Those in favor of what's written here, to keep Making a Baby by Rachel Green, are shelved in the Juvenile Section Collection as it was selected following the library's two-point-seven-point-one materials selection policy. Those who want to vote in favor?
No, are you going to do a roll call? Come on now.
She was going to write it down.
It's going to be a roll call. You must be kidding.
Well, she was going to know. She said she'd write it down. I think it's our, I think it's our decision here.
Yes, but I mean, you want to...
All right, do a roll call. It's not required, I'm happy to do a roll call. Yes, it seems, it seems...
Okay. Kay, Kate's first.
Yes.
Will Thomas check?
Yes.
Erin Cook, that's the one.
No.
Lori Roberts?
No.
And Christine's friend?
No.
Okay, that was close. Karen, you can move on.
Okay, so I move to relocate books of, since the top, since the top of family planning.
That's really big.
Just for not, um, no, family planning, right, not specifically planning.
Okay.
Family planning, not, um, uh, like... This shouldn't be an emotion, because I'm searching for words, uh, girls changing bodies, like adolescent.
Redaction, what we said.
Like adolescent. Yeah, of adolescent, uh, youthful adolescent, puberty.
There we go.
Yes, Kay, right, Kay, yes.
Not books dealing with puberty. This is not to include that, just of books of...
Mechanics? Reproduction? Or just...
Just reproduction. Maybe just reproduction. We can change that later, too. You know, we can change it on policy and all that, but just to move books of reproduction sexually sensitive material. Sexually sensitive, yes, books regarding reproduction in sexually sensitive material.
So you make that determination that it's sexually sensitive. Does Drew go through and look at them? Does he get with Angela? The two of them sit down and look at it and say, hey, you think this is the sexiest of that, and he makes that determination?
Can you just say, everything of that call number?
Because it's not in a certain section, let's say. It's not in, there's no female reproductive area in the children's section. That's old, I don't...
I think there is, with the other books that...
But it's in the puberty section, like, with the American Girl puberty, like, it's different. That's what I think.
That's your opinion.
Well, that's my thing, but that's why we pay you the big bucks to go through.
So he's gonna make that decision, that you're sexually sensitive?
I don't know, and people, they want to appeal it, but maybe you don't have to, I guess.
Just draw attention to the fact that this is something that the policy committee should look at, because right now...
Yes.
We're in a gray area.
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
Risking legal liability by going past our policy. There's nothing to stop us from looking at this, it's all clear, though. We look at all our policies, including this.
Because you're saying right now, you're turning it entirely a hundred percent over to Drew to make those determinations, so he may pick that book up next week and like, no, it's not sexually sensitive, and move it right back. I mean, you may want it over there, but he may look at that and say, you know what, that, those seventeen dollars?
I don't know. Someone was gonna say that. Just how about Making a Baby? I mean, this is...
Look, there's an officer, somebody has been taking control of this meeting.
Are you requesting the officer during the meeting?
I think he should be in here.
All right, we'll go get him.
Do you think we have problems?
That's at the board's request, so it's officially stated.
No.
You have a board member who's interested in questioning?
Should I instruct the audience?
I didn't know they were gonna, are you guys getting crazy?
Well, I'm, I'm...
We get it. We got party.
I don't really understand with that vague time. I don't think that's any more important.
Our policy says, um, 2.7, 2.71, suitability of subject and method of presentation to the intended audience. So... That's very, that's a very good point.
Method of presentation.
Suitability of subject or method of presentation to the intended audience.
Which one is that, Laura?
It's the very bottom of the page, on the first page of the report.
On the page? Oh, it's not even on the right page.
So, yeah, we can agree with, you know, like, educational value, yes, inclusiveness, yes. It's recommended by professionals, yes. Timelessness, importance to contemporary society, yes. Suitability of subject and method of presentation to the intended audience. I don't know.
That's kind of the gray.
Yeah, that's right, that's kind of...
That's the one we're thinking doesn't fit the criteria.
I will just clarify, that part of the selection is using professional journals, and those professional journals did recommend it for the intended audience. That does follow internal selection policy.
And Drew is right, because there's no way that the people who buy the books can look at every book they have time.
I agree.
And that's how they figure out what's a good book and what isn't, by looking at the expert's pages. So it, it was purchased legitimately.
Oh, yeah, I, yes, I believe that, too, like, I bought children's books, so I, I know, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, we're just, would you consider making the motion just for that book?
Yeah.
And not a whole...
Let's just deal with just...
And then we'll take it up again with our policy.
Sounds great.
We'll have, we'll have the future to look at it again.
Yeah, sounds great to me. So I'll just make the motion just for this book. Chris, can you call up the call number?
You can read it.
All right, Angie. Um, so... I move to move, not, not being redundant in that, the book Making a Baby by author Rachel Greener. Call number J six one eight point two...
She's loud.
Oh, yeah.
She's drawn ahead.
Sorry. Sorry, you're not taking? Sorry. Six one eight point two, and then G eight one two M. Into the...
Can I see that?
Yeah, yeah, just look at it.
I don't sure that I need this.
You don't?
You may not.
She's being very hungry.
I just thought I should go ahead, because it keeps the same call number, right, we just take off the J then?
Yeah.
That's easy.
There's other criteria that we use in the adult section that may not apply to this. I want to be very clear, that the call number may change based on the category in the adult section versus the children's section.
That's one.
There are different numbers used, they may be close, but it may be different.
All right, that's one number.
All right, I leave the call number off.
Leave the call number off.
Just put the title.
Let him be professional about putting it in what, the right category.
What do you want me to say next?
I'll repeat your motion.
To move Making a Baby by Rachel Greener from the Youth Services Children's Section of the library into the Adult Section of the library under total student section clause.
It does not have a name, it has a category number which cannot be...
Okay, I get that.
Again, you're getting any decisions that we have to review that I cannot do, that's a question of...
Right, just whatever under that, I would call. To Adult Section.
Under its appropriate...
Under its appropriate.
Do we know it?
Right, yeah. Do we just want it? There you go.
Is that your motion? I must advise the board that according to my recommendation, this does not follow the library policy, 2.2.2 Library Bill Rights. A person's right to use the library shall not be denied or abridged because of age, work, background, or views. I must advise the board that it does not follow the policy.
We talked about that. Nine and a half weeks is the... Okay, go ahead. That's my motion.
All right. Would you read it again? The motion on the floor. Are we, yes, the motion, so that we can send it?
To move Making a Baby. To move the book Making a Baby by Rachel Greener from Youth Services Children's Section to Adult Section under appropriate...
Yeah, that's genderly, plus, yeah.
All right. Is there a second for that?
Is there a second for that?
Any second?
All segment. You gonna have another roll call?
Okay, yeah. The motion's been made.
Second. Karen Cook, Esther Lin?
Yes.
Lori Roberts?
Yes.
Kay Cains?
No, I would say by limiting just one book where I'm no more strong legal footing than we were Making a General, in terms of books about reproduction. It's unfortunate that the prosecutor's office, our legal counsel, could not be present tonight, but it's not my job as an attorney to advise the board when I'm a board member. Where I'm no more strong legal footing, for at least one book, or an entire group of books.
Christine's firm?
I'm really on the fence. I don't, I want to see...
Sure, if you come back to her, call my name, I'll, I'll, others, you go by...
What's your...
No. For the very same reason that Casey did.
Hi, Jennifer.
Yes, this is my turn.
I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say no. But there's no reason we can't reconsider it with any policy. I, I, I don't want us to be subject to litigation. And I know how it goes. So we will take it up again with the new policy.
Kay, can you? I, I didn't want to, like, ask a question, anyway. To want, that you said because of litigation, not as an attorney, but why were you thinking that we would have litigation problems since you said it, or board?
It's not following the policy.
Because it's not in our policy now.
It's not in our policy. And I've been at a board that's been sued, and we were all deposed, and it's not fun. I think any of you want to put yourself in that position.
I had two attorneys, one is our state representative, explain to me that, no, the board can do whatever it wants, and then they can change the policy. We can do whatever we wanted to do.
But the policy change comes first, and the vote comes second.
You can run a new one.
Okay, that is, that is why I would have, and just so you know.
Your legal counsel has been voted in this process. They did not advise you on this issue.
Drew, thank you, but, no, I just said who advised me. I didn't mean that.
Board has their own counsel.
Thank you, I talked to our state representative, thank you. Who was also an attorney. I don't know if you're aware that Brian Stewart is our state representative. Okay. We, um, and I talked to another attorney also, who happens to be one of the...
We defeated the motion. So we need to pass a motion, so that we can finalize it. So I think we need to go back to the original, the original motion. And then, when we pass that, we can review it again after we change our policy. Not a done deal, it's not over.
Have to have policies we need.
Yes.
Let's not say that.
Yes. God, God, I'm putting the card before this meeting. But it's not, it's not gonna end necessarily, but it doesn't have to, it can come up again. All right, so let's, let's go back to our original one. I lost it.
Eight, eight.
Eight, eight. Kay, would you do that again?
Someone should make that motion, okay. If you want to, I'll make it. All right, I'll make that motion, as stated, to keep Making a Baby by Rachel Greener Sheldon in the Juvenile Nonfiction Collection, as it was selected following the library's 2.7.1 Materials Selection Policy.
I'll second it. All right, who's second?
Kay.
Kay, can you?
It's a reversal first.
Yeah.
Is this the original motion?
Yeah.
It's, it's, the motion is written, changed for you.
My God, rest your souls.
The original motion has been moved again?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Can I make the motion?
Second, Will? Will Thomas check?
Yes.
Eight, eight?
Yes.
Lori Roberts? Lori Roberts? Christine's firm?
Yes.
Okay, let's try and go through this.
Yeah. Yeah, my God, um, Heather Nunn, in business. I wanted to run, um, to the, wanting to move from the front row, and implore Drew to, um, talk to the youth staff about merchants in the library.
Yeah, I have my...
Yeah, I was, I was the only...
I've never heard of the policy here, or I haven't yet. I was glad we approached it and to talk about that issue, but I don't know...
And I never thought about it, and I should have thought about it.
So it was a long time ago?
No, hers was just this summer, but now I'm saying something...
Oh, but...
I, I'm, my stuff is more and more common now.
You sure?
Yeah.
But most... It's a little of a bust, you know, because they're all covering it.
I'll make sure they understand what campaign...
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I don't...
She said she mentioned it, then, but I didn't...
She did.
I don't ever want to hear that, that, any of that ever again. Health insurance selection. Who wants to take that one?
Yeah, so, um, as we talked about, um, last month, we're passing the budget. We had, uh, budgeted for a twenty percent increase. Our current renewal came back at a twenty-three percent increase. We are looking at, um, a plan that is just slightly less than a fifteen percent increase. If you look at the health insurance memo that I sent you, um, Terry, when you pack it there, it is before right column. And as you can see, we're looking at a fifty-seven point renewal, um, for the employer share...